Welcome everyone and thank you for attending and welcome to this extraordinary meeting of the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee. The meeting today is open to the public, the meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so that not disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from town hall staff and the assembly point is in Tudor Square. The agenda and reports for today's meeting are available on the council's website, paper copies are available in the chamber and there is one agenda report pack. We have not received any public questions or petitions relating to items to be discussed today and please note that Agenda Item 5 and 6 will be presented in reverse order. If I could just go around now and ask members of the committee to introduce themselves starting to my left, thank you.
We're just having a little technical issue, sorry.
Mr. Malacca Hebe.
Marouf Raaf, another ready shall want to up to chair.
Sorry, the microphones at the other side aren't working either. They'll just come over and have a look at it.
Counselor Mohamed Marouf Graves Park and Lib Dem Group spokesperson for Education.
Counselor Ann Wishaker West Ecklesfield Ward.
Thank you. So Fiona, do we have any apologies for absence please?
We don't now.
And we don't have any exclusions of the public or the press for today? And do we have any declarations of interest? Are any members wishing to declare those for any items of business on today's agenda? No? Thank you. So we're going to go to item number five, which was item number six for those watching and trying to follow this from home. So we've moved the agenda items round because the agenda item number six sets the scene for agenda item number five and is easier for people to follow. So if that's okay with everyone. So can I ask officers to come forward please who are presenting this item? Thank you.
Thank you Chair and hello committee. My name's Sam Martin, I'm one of the heads of commissioning in the Integrated Commission and Public Health Service, colleague in staff.
Hi, I'm Cathy Tande, I'm the strategic commissioning manager and my team have responsibility within the council for overseeing sufficiency from early years, primary, secondary and post-16 provision. Nice to meet everybody.
So we're really grateful that you could put on a special committee to cover these two items which are, I think, are big items for the city, covering our strategic direction around education places planning for the next three to five years really and looking even further into the future to sort of set the scene. What we've been asked to do is bring a presentation which uses a set of slides, covers a lot of the information that's in the strategy document that you've all had as part of the pack. Those documents are quite big and detailed and necessarily so because it's a big area, it covers the whole of the city and all of the sectors in terms of education from early years through to post-16 provision. And there's quite a few slides in the set but I think probably you'll find it useful and I think the public who are watching if they're on live stream will find it useful accompanying the big long document that comprises the strategy to be able to go through the slides today. So I'll hopefully do that as quickly as I can with the help of Cathy and then obviously there's some time for some questions and it's probably worth me saying Cathy does have to go about 10 to 2 so I'll make sure I get through and we can have some questions because Cathy's our resident expert on all the detail. I know quite a bit of it but Cathy knows a lot more than me. So what I'm going to try and do is see if the technology works for me and I'm going to get so confused now because I've got two screens and this one in front of me with the same information on it. So the first item that we're going to cover is the overall commissioning plan. So I guess this is a really big and important document that a number of officers and colleagues in the whole of the sector have contributed to over the last year I guess. And the benefits I think as a council of us setting out this sort of strategic direction is a couple of things. So one is obviously as a council, we're responsible for school places planning and education places planning. That's a process that takes a long time, it's a bit like a tanker and it takes a long time to start to move. You know, if we're thinking three, four years ahead in terms of building provision or getting new places for children, it takes a long time to do that. So having a strategic document that sets the groundwork in terms of the principles by which we'll work over the next few years and has a long look into the future is really useful. It also helps us, if you like, communicate our intentions to the sector. So as you'll see from the presentation, we work in partnership with a whole bunch of different stakeholders including schools, academy trusts, early years providers, colleges and post-16 providers. So it's really important that we set out our intentions transparently and openly to a whole bunch of stakeholders that we work with and it means that people in that sector, those different sectors can make some of their strategic decisions and work with us based on the principles that we're setting out. We're not coming to them with any surprises if we turn up to a school and say, we think you might need some extra places in two years' time. That's not a complete surprise to people and that they kind of know the direction that we're going. So the strategy is a big document that sets out our vision, values, guiding principles, which guide what we're doing in terms of school place planning. It looks in a lot of detail at our current and future challenges, the different issues in each of those sectors, early years, primary, secondary, post-16 and sets out at relatively high levels some of our action plans that we'll be working to try and address any of the issues that we've got coming forward. Just a quick reminder of the statutory responsibilities the council has that this strategy fits within. So we've got the Childcare Act of 2006/2016 and the Children and Families Act, the Education Act 96 and the Education and Schools Act of 2008. So they're the core documents that set our statutory duties in terms of school places planning. I know that many of the committee will know that our, the council's responsibilities around schools has changed considerably in the last 15, 20 years but one of our core functions is still around the planning and sufficiency of places. We're not directly responsible for running the schools and we have to work in partnership with schools and academies, trusts in terms of developing new provision. We can't just order them to do what we want them to do but we still have a responsibility to kind of help shape that market and do the planning and forecasting. The strategy includes our kind of overarching vision which I think is fairly straightforward to read. Really we're trying to work, make sure that every child and young person has access to a great local place in education right through from early years to post-16. And we're trying to, as far as we can, be responsible and agile and have a flexible planning system that meets both the current demand and takes account of what future demand might be and that we work collaboratively across the system to try and achieve that It wouldn't be good to come to committee without restating our council values and how they sort of fit with this strategy but clearly children, young people and families are at the heart of everything that we're trying to do and this is about ensuring good quality education for every child and young person in the city. Our commitment to open and honesty is sort of demonstrated by the fact that we're trying to publish a strategy that sets out the data for people to read, sets out our principles and our ambitions. So we're trying to be open and transparent about that as a council and obviously we're trying to do that in a way that works with a whole bunch of stakeholders to enable us to deliver what we want to deliver for the city. Tiny writing on that one in the distance, isn't it? So I guess the strategy encompasses a number of principles which is probably just worth sort of dwelling on at the start. So I think at the start of that is about us trying to develop really high trust relationships. That's about that, working together across the system. It's not about us dictating or ordering different stakeholders to do things but really building a kind of a relationship of trust so that we're all working, pulling in the same direction. We want to use local knowledge and intelligence so we, and it sets out in the strategy document, I'll talk about it briefly, the methodologies we use to try and make sense of the data that we've got and try and work out what might be coming down the line in terms of changes so that we can take account of those in terms of our planning. We want to make sure that any provision that we develop is sustainable and well placed to deliver high quality education, to get the best use of public funding so that we've got places for children and people where they need them and we don't end up with too many surplus places in the system which can be as difficult for the system as having not enough places at times. And we want to exploit opportunities for innovative practice when we're developing proposals. So there are lots of different ways that schools, academies, providers in the post-16 and early years sector have really good ideas about how to make use of the capacity and the facilities that they've got and we want to really harness that kind of innovation. It's not about us as a council having all the answers I guess, it's about working with partners who often know what's best for the children and people who they're working So I guess just a couple of key messages from us at the start of this is, it's really not very easy. It's a complicated process which takes a long time and can be thrown off course by a whole bunch of unforeseen factors I guess. We look at things like demographic factors but you also have factors like social mobility, people moving in and out of the city for a whole host of reasons, housing, new housing growth and you know it's impossible to predict how many people will move in to a particular housing estate if it's built and how many of those might have children or plan to. They're all things that we try and take a bit of a look back and say, if that was what happened in the past, we think that might happen in the future, what might that turn out in terms of numbers of school places that we need? On the basis that we need to think two or three years ahead. We can't just pop up in September and go, oh, we need another couple of classes worth of school places. By the get to that point, it's far too late. We can't obviously do it alone, sufficiency is a really shared issue across the system and getting the balance right, we're trying to walk a line between having enough provision, not too much so that we end up with surplus places but obviously if we end up with not enough places, that's going to be devastating for those children and families that can't get a school place. So I want to make sure we're not in that position. The strategy document covers in a bit more detail our forecasting methodology. I won't dwell on the detail of the slides, the writing's quite small on there but essentially we kind of start off with a snapshot of child health data which we get, all data from GP registrations and that gives us data about births so we can look into, you know, if children are born now, if they're like in four years, they're going to need a school place, in another, you know, seven, eight years, they're going to need a secondary school place. So we start with that as the sort of basic building blocks with them, I was going to say we, it's really not me, it's the wizzy techie people in our performance analysis service and Cathy's team that do a lot of this stuff, work out what that, what previous school roles have looked like in terms of change, we use ONS data as well and then they also look at the things like the housing plans, so where we've got, where we know new housing's coming on stream and to try and amend our forecast to take account of that sort of stuff. So it's a pretty complicated process that's reviewed every year to see whether we got it right and how far out we were and if there are revisions needed on that basis. And there's a sort of diagram on that slide which just sort of gives a bit of an example of that. So economic growth for example is a bit that I've not talked about there on that, we talked about migration and development of new housing, economic growth also obviously draws new people into the city and some of those will come with families or start families so we need to sort of take account of things that might be coming down the line there if Sheffield's growing economically. And there's a fairly complicated diagram there which just sets out some of the complexities around when we've got new housing, how that, you know, there's a quite complicated process trying to work out what does that mean in terms of school places potentially. So for example, you know, a new estate of three bedroom family homes is probably likely to turn into more demand for school places than 200 city centre one bed apartments for example. So that's a pretty straightforward and obvious example but there's lots of other complexities in the system that we try and take account of to when we're trying to work out how many school places does 100 new homes usually equate to for example. And I suppose just before we get into the detail of the different sectors like early years, secondary, primary etc, just to give you an example, our, the way that we do this generally works quite well. So our, in Sheffield, our forecasting for secondary school places for example has been about 99% accurate in most years. The table goes back there to 2014 and we've been fairly consistent in our accuracy of what number of places we thought we needed to, what we actually needed when it came to that sort of start of that particular school year. So we're really proud of that, I think that's testament to our work of the team in kind of keeping on that and updating the data very regularly. But I guess we're also not, we're not complacent because you know from statistically 99% sounds really great, that 1% equates to I think in that final year is about two forms, two forms of entry worth, that's our 60 pupils. So if you get it wrong one way or the other then it still equates to quite a number of kids that if you don't get it right, might not have a place when it comes to it. So we don't want to be complacent about that but we compare really well nationally in terms of the sort of benchmarking around our forecasting. In the strategy document itself then, we'll move on and look at our, the different sectors, we're just talking briefly through the kind of main challenges in each sector but just for information, the map's in the strategy document itself. So for planning purposes, our city's divided up into seven planning areas in terms of school places and other services actually. So you can probably, if you know your map of Sheffield, look and find your ward and find which planning area you're in by looking at that map. But when we're talking a little bit later on about where we might need particular interventions over the coming years in terms of extra places, we'll refer to the planning areas. So we will try and, when we say planning area five, we'll probably also say, so places like Manor. So you can just get an idea of which bit of the city that we're talking about because sometimes it's easy to forget. So to just touch on the early years and education side of things, early years childcare and education side of things, there's a few bit of information in the document itself and this is a sort of illustrative graph which gives you an example of the take up of our early years, free early learning places in the city. So even I can't read that with my glasses away from my face. So the red line at the top is the three and four year places and the blue line further down is the two year olds. So it's the take up of the free places by people that are eligible. So we're in the sort of 94, up to 94% for the three and four year old places and a bit lower than that for the two year old places which has crept up a little bit in the last couple of years. And so take up there is reasonably good in terms of eligibility and take up but we're always trying really hard. We have a couple of times every year where we send out, we've got this golden ticket, isn't it? Letters to parents who we know are eligible from their sort of economic circumstances to encourage them to take up their free early learning place. And obviously the strategy document has a bit more information about the early years sector but I guess our key challenges in terms of childcare and early education sector over the, currently and into the coming years are that there is a falling birth rate. So what we've had in the city is a sort of bulge in the population that's gone through primary schools sector and is now hitting the secondary school sector but we've still got sort of falling roles on the, in early years provision. So that's a challenge for some of our providers who are finding that the numbers each year are getting a bit lower when the kids are sort of signing up and parents are signing up. The take up of funded early learning, we need to keep on encouraging people to take up their eligible place. And overall the sustainability of the marketplace, councillors will all be aware probably if you've got early years providers on your patch of the challenges they're having in terms of recruitment of qualified staff and retention and the funding that comes through, the government funding, a lot of them would say it's just not enough to keep going. We have some reforms coming down the line which we should be coming back in the autumn to brief the committee on, which we'll tell you all about and what the implications of those reforms will be for the sector. So I think that's probably everything on early years and education childcare. I didn't move it on, did I? So apologies about that Chair. Reception places. So this fairly complicated looking table, there's a few of these in the strategy document itself but what you've got in this table is, this graph is, from the left to the right, it goes from year 20, 2007. So this is kind of our, the places that we forecast versus the places that we ended up needing. Right, and it projects it forward into the future. So it projects forward to I think 2034. So this is quite, this is the sort of long term planning process that we're involved in. So the dark blue bars get us up to the present day almost, so that's the places that we ended up requiring. Then you get the sort of mid colour blue bars which is the kind of years that we're in at the moment and then the pale blue bars on the right hand side of this graph are where we're projecting numbers into the future. So I guess as you get further into the future, we're assuming that those numbers are less and less accurate because they're just based on population at the moment with a bit of growth built in. The lines at the top of the graph are the places that we have available. So you can see that in terms of primary places, that bulge that we were saying has went through the system, the highest year was about 2016/17, that's that kind of high point of those blue, dark blue bars and then we've had a slow drop off where we end up with a fairly low point over the next couple of years. And you can see that at various points there, we've got surplus places in the system. So there are plenty of primary school places. So in terms of primary sector, I guess the key challenge in terms of our strategy are that we've got surplus places and falling roles is the picture. So we need to manage that really carefully. We obviously, those falling roles won't appear uniformly across the city. So where you've got some areas, and we're going to talk about that a little bit later, where we've got some areas where there will be some demand, we might need in a local area to have some more places because just, you know, if you need more places in Stockbridge, you can't say, well, we've got places over in Westfield for example, the kids can't, primary school can't go that far. So we need to think really carefully about where we might need to make some temporary increases to places in local areas. But we need to also think about where, so that's some of that's associated with housing development. So we've got some developments out at Ute Bridge, aren't we, in Walkers Side, which are having an impact on demand for places over the next couple of years. So we need to really work with the school sector to use the estate that we've got effectively. The next graph shows you the same kind of graphs, it's the same format as the one for primary but this is for the secondary, so this is year seven places, this is secondary. And you can see there's a big difference here. So again, those dark blue bars are the, go up to the present day and then we get to the lighter blue bars towards the right hand side which is where we're projecting into the future what it's going to look like. With those, the dotted lines at the top are the places we've got available. So I guess what this shows you is that secondary is where our pressures are in terms of now and the next few years in terms of places available. So if we, what it's actually saying is if we don't do some things in terms of extra places, then we're not going to have enough spaces for the children that we anticipate needing them. And you can see that the bulge that came through primary and now has dropped off, is now hitting the secondary sector and then as you get towards the right hand side of that graph, that drop off in roles starts to appear again. So for the secondary sector, I guess the key challenges are that immediate pressure in terms of places and we'll talk a little, in a little second, I'll tell you a little bit about where some of those, in which areas of the city some of that demand's going to really materialise. So in particular, we've got planning areas one, which on that map you all, if you remember, was sort of the south west of the city and planning area five, which is sort of the round Manor, which is schools like Park, Academy Springs. So we've got some new housing in planning area five for example and planning area one so it's going to have an impact. And obviously we have migration to think about as well in terms of people moving in and out of the city and across the city. So we need to be really careful and this is, I guess, in the strategy document, what we're setting out is an ambition to be, we need to expand places to make sure we've got enough places but we know that we're going to have probably a falling in role in the next sort of five, six, seven, eight years. So we need to be really careful that we don't make too many permanent expansions in capital investment and then leave some schools with vacant places that they can't fill because that has a big financial impact on schools in terms of their budgets. So just in, talking through this in a little bit more detail, we don't need to understand every number on these graphs but these ones, this is a bit, the team do some more detailed graphs and can produce these for each planning area and catchment if necessary. So this is just giving you an example of how they do some, how we do some of this thinking. So this is the planning area one, which is the south west of the city forecast. These graphs work back to front from the ones that you've seen previously which doesn't always help. So you start on the right hand side of this graph going back to 2018 and we're looking on the left through to 2033. But you can see where our forecasting in terms of planning area one means that even with the provisions that we've got in place at the moment, because we have some expansions taking place in planning area one right now, but it still means that by the time we get to, over the next few years, there will still be a couple of years where there aren't enough spaces if we don't do additional things. So that's just on the data that we've got at the moment. And there's a similar graph for planning area five where the problem is even slightly more acute actually in terms of gaps based on the data that we've got right now is that we will have at least a number of years where there aren't enough places if we don't do, if we don't start planning for that now and making some interventions. So that's a summary, a summary screen there about the secondary sector considerations. So we know that without intervention there'll be a sustained shortfall of secondary school places across some specific areas. So we will need to do some temporary, at some permanent refurbishment and/or new build expansions needed to accommodate the demand and that then forms some of the information that's in the second paper for today's committee chair, the phase two expansion plans. And so the strategy for ensuring those secondary places there are around small permanent expansions which are targeted to meet key areas of need, where we know we've got deficit and then where we know there might be surplus, making sure we've got the citywide approach to allocations and some temporary increases to, in the, in the schools places to meet the peak in 2023. So doing some immediate stuff with some of the schools which we've got planned to make without a significant capital investment to enable them to take more places for this The other thing that's, we're asking for in the, this is in the second paper really Chair, is to, in terms of our strategy around secondary places, is to increase our forecasts by, add a 3% contingency to our forecasting. So what we've done historically in terms of our places planning is we've not built in a contingency because when we've had surplus places, you don't need to do that. What we found though this year is that that's meant, the system's very tight and our admissions team have had to work really, really hard to find places across the system for a particular number of late applications that we've had that have come in. So what we're asking for, the committee permission as part of that second paper is to, maybe we could come back to it when we need to make the decisions Chair, but maybe it's worth talking about it in the context of the overall presentation here is to, that we, when we do our forecast, we add a 3% contingency on to allow for some breathing space in the system. It's worth saying that the Audit Commission in some of their reports recommend that local authorities do have at least a 5% contingency built into their forecasting. Our forecasting's been quite accurate in the past, we've not felt we needed to do that but we now feel that we should do at least for the next few years in terms of the secondary forecasts so that we've got that breathing space. There's a little bit of the risks in a slide in a second which I'll come back to around that, just to make sure that the committee are fully aware of that one. But I guess just in terms of summary, in terms of addressing deficits, our main aims are to work collaborative with schools in those areas. So if we get permission from committee to go and have those conversations in those planning areas, we can go and do that. Only agree permanent expansions where they're absolutely required again so that we're not sort of giving schools a rod for their own back really in terms of extra places that they can't fill in the future. And to have a flexible system, so if we do invest capital in extra places, that the, any building work that's done is built flexibly so that it can be used for other purposes when it might not be needed as a classroom anymore. So there's all kinds of ways you can try and think about that, whether it's for specialist SCND provision or for community use or after school activities type flexibilities like that. So it's really important that we're trying to make the system as flexible as possible. In terms of that request we're making around the 3% uplift on forecasts, so I guess the benefits of doing that, I've explained pretty straightforwardly really, it creates some flexibility in the system particularly where there might be surprises that come through in terms of migration or late applications. It reduces our, the requirement to keep going back to schools like we have done this year a fair bit and say, can you find us a few more places, can we squeeze a few more in, you know, and I think eventually we get to a point where we're at saturation point with that and so I think building in some proper expansion so that schools can accommodate those requests without so many appeals would be really useful for the system. I guess the risk for us as a council and for schools is it creates a bit too much surplus in the system and I suppose that mitigation for that as officers then will be to really monitor that carefully. We do that every year, come back and go, what did it actually turn out like, what's that told us? And if we feel as though we're building too much surplus into the system, we can adjust that. So in terms of the, a bit of detail around where intervention, we think is going to be required in the short, shorter term, then in terms of primary, we've got Planning Area Two. Cathy might need to remind me which Planning Area Two is.
So that's kind of the Stockbridge area of the city, rural part of the city.
So that's what we were just talking about earlier on, isn't it? And Planning Area Five, again, that's sort of manor area. So we've got the housing there that's turned into manor for school places. And in terms of secondary, we've got Planning Area One and Planning Area Five, which we showed you the graphs about to sort of illustrate the point. But there are a couple of other areas where we're going to take, we're suggesting we take a watching brief, so we just keep a really close monitor on what's happening in those areas, rather than jump at this point to expansions. But we're prepared to do that if we need to. So it's quite a bit on secondary, because that's, we feel that that's really important to go through right now, because it's quite a sort of pressure point in the coming years. We move on to just brief on to post 16. So in terms of demand for places, that's a sort of similar graph that you've seen before. So it goes from almost where we are right now on the left. You can see that that growth that's going through secondary will eventually, by the time we get towards the end of this decade, start to move into the post 16 world in terms of demand for places. Again, that'll be influenced by a whole bunch of things when we get to the actual, when we get to 2028, et cetera. And in terms of post 16 provision, there's a whole bunch of messages in the Strategy Document itself. But in summary, so currently our post 16 provision, we have more supply than we have demand. So we have, and the post 16 landscape is quite complicated, as people will know. Council has less, even less influence over the post 16 landscape than it does for primary and secondary, because all the funding goes through ESFA rather than through council. But we have six forms, we have colleges, traineeships, training providers, there's a whole mix of providers in that, in the post 16 marketplace. There's been a slight shift, there's been a slightly increased take up of sixth form places over the last few years. And then a drop in training provision, I think Covid had a big impact on take up of training provision, which can sense whether that's going to start to creep back up over the next few years, which remains to be seen. And we have good quality provision across the city in terms of A level further education and training. But planning around that sole sector is really difficult. I think what will, one of the things that people will talk about is that where we have some of our sixth form provision is concentrated in some areas of the city, and that's been very similar for a number of years, and it's quite a difficult position to sort of change and influence. But we're really conscious of some of those, where we have some of those perceived gaps in provision. And that's, we mentioned that in the Strategy Document. So we anticipate the demand growing over the next few years, so we need to think carefully about that and have conversations, relevant conversations with different providers about what might be needed in terms of extra provision or not, to sort of meet some of that demand. I think one of the things about the complexities is, we don't know what pupils are going to choose. So I think that just about forty percent of pupils choose at the moment a sixth form route. The rest, the majority of those will go to college. But that's a choice that young people can make, sort of fairly early on. So getting good intelligence about what those choices are likely to be is part of our strategy going forward, sort of working with our education and skills colleagues. So there's a whole load of work to do on the data on sufficiency as we head towards that peak point. We're not there yet, but we need to start thinking about that now. So that's gone through all the different sectors. I'll briefly just talk about the fact that we did a consultation on the strategy. We came in originally to the committee back in January, and so we had permission then to go out to consult widely. So we put that out as a public consultation. I better move down the screen. So we hosted the consultation on the council's platform, had a number of people visit and download the information. We, I think we only had twenty three actual written responses to the consultation out of those two hundred and fifty, which I guess is probably not completely safe to say. That meant everybody else was happy with what they read, but I guess it felt, most people weren't sort of driven to make sort of strong comments about it one way or the other. But in terms of the people that did respond, the majority of people agreed either strongly or somewhat agreed with both the vision, the values and guiding principles that we set out at the start of this presentation, and with the overall plan, and with the action plans towards the end. So on that basis, we're sort of coming back to say, we've consulted on the draft, and we'd want, we'd really like the permission of the committee now to publish that strategy, and that to be the piece of work that guides us over the coming years. I think that's the end of the presentation. So.
Thank you, Sam. I'm going to see if any member, I'm going to take the privilege of the chair and ask a couple of questions myself. But have any other members got questions or comments? Oh, everybody, just one sec. All right. Okay, if you don't mind, I'll go first, because it's been burning and I've written it down and I need to get it off my chest. So, and then I've got your names, thank you. So you mentioned in the presentation, Sam, as part of the consultation, you've worked with stakeholders such as Matson College. Could you, could you let us know whether the recent decision by Sheffield College to close Peaks has been part, embedded in part, as part of this strategy with regards to post 16? And also, as part of this strategy, how much does the strategy take into account national policy and national funding with regards to post 16 moving forward, please?
So I suppose those questions are particularly about post 16. So I think that the consultation will have included the strategy being seen by the college. I'm not sure whether the college were one of the respondents to the consultation specifically, Cathy.
No, not at all.
Maybe not. So how far it's influenced the decision of the college, I guess, as officers, we're not sure. What was the second question?
The other question was, but how much we take into account what national policy and national funding is for post 16 as part of our strategy?
John, you got anything to answer on that, Cathy? I guess we do take it into account, but we need to work with our colleagues across the other bits of the education and skills sector, because it's a really complicated picture. You've got things like technical education coming on stream, which people think is likely to grow in terms of demand. But it's really hard to predict what choices people are going to make at this point about that kind of thing. So it's a bit of a, kind of constant watching brief really on that kind of things.
Thank you. Counselor done.
Thank you, thank you, Sam. Well, it's quite shocking really, isn't it, when you look at the, how early years is, and how secondary is, and how you see how juniors coping, and the majority of junior schools are under local authority control. However, I will move on from that. I don't underestimate at all the challenges for secondary. And I know this has been happening, been around for a long time. What I would like to know is, we do know that when we address what we desperately need to do for the children right now, we are going to create surplus. However, with academyisation, they do not have to work with us. So when we are helping them and when we are putting our money in, how are we making sure that when these spaces become surplus, that that extra cost will not be passed on to the community? Because the communities, we are desperate for community organisational rooms and things like that. So when we're looking at a plan for our communities, how do we make sure that that cost is not going to be passed on disproportionately, that it isn't seen as a cash cow? But I'm not underestimating the great work that all the teams have been doing. But we have to realise this is public money that we are using, and academyisation is a private business. And I know how well you work with the MATS around here, but MATS change hands, they move and everything. So I just want to make sure that we have some influence still, or there are some checks and balances in that. Thanks.
Thank you. I think Meredith's going to respond. Thank you.
So just to start off with, academies aren't private businesses, it is public money that funds academies in the same way that it funds local authority maintains schools. I get your point though, how do we make sure that any space that we are creating is utilised well going forward? And absolutely understand that. And I think that there are a number of areas that we're in conversation with those providers about how it can be used. And I take your point about community, and I don't know that community use has been one of the discussions. So we'll take that as a pointer. But Sam, you might, you might say that it already has been. And I think the other thing I would state is that coming into Sheffield, I have been really impressed with the relationships we have with all of our schools, and that ability to have those robust and challenging conversations as well. And I know that the team who've been responsible for that have done that. But I take the points that you make. But Sam, I don't know if you've got more to add.
I wouldn't add too much now. I think it is about building relationships of trust. You know, there's, there are so many things we can influence around the school sector, whether they maintain schools or, because even a maintained school, they have a governing body, you know, to make the decisions about what the school does. But yeah, so we can never get guarantees about certain things, you know, because of the way the system is built. But that's, that's why we're trying to work really hard to just work really closely with those partners, so we can get that kind of community use out of those, the sector. So I would add, the government as part of its childcare reforms, there's quite a big push on wraparound childcare and out of school activities, and the responsibility of schools there. So that's all, none of that's really come to fruition yet, it's all very early days. But I think there's a big push on that, which will obviously include academies in terms of what they do as well.
Thank you. Counselor Horner.
Thank you, Chair. I'll go back to the point you made about Crystal Peaks. Because I think you said early on, that one of the things in the whole strategy was a great, to provide a great local place for people. Well, three hundred students at Crystal Peaks have been offered a great local place at the tram stop, because they have to now travel into town. And a general feeling in the South East, which was not mentioned, but I know it's not one of the areas you're looking at, we've got a lack of post 16 provision. We've got no sixth forms. We're also on the boundary, the border of Rotherham in one part and Derbyshire in the other part, and we are seeing people go across the boundary. Because you know, this is about messages to people, and what message does it send to teenagers in the South East? That there's, that there's no great post 16 provision for them. And I know it's not your fault. And I, I, I'm trying to be as gentle about it as I can, because it's not your fault. But I cannot help but express my annoyance that Sheffield College keeps talking about the consultations that it's done, when in fact it announced at a few months' notice that it was going to close provision at Crystal Peaks, and then came around and told us all about it. I don't regard that as a consultation, regard that as a slap in the face to students in the South East. And so to say, I'm not blaming you for it, you have to work with people. But I don't see what the message we're currently sending to potential students in the South East is, because we're providing them with nothing at the moment.
Thank you. I've got a number of people who want to respond to this. Meredith and then?
So I'm happy to begin the response. So I met with Angela Folkes on Friday, who's the principal of Sheffield College. And I think that that move to good and that journey that the college has been on puts us in a really strong position across Sheffield around the, the provision that is there. I understand the issues around that area of Sheffield and also the provision there, and the potential changes which the college are considering. And obviously, it's their corporate governance, as you referred to, that makes a decision about the use of their buildings. But we are in conversation with them. And certainly, the conversation that I had with her was mirrored my views about ensuring that we have high aspiration, high opportunities for our young people within Sheffield. So that's an initial conversation I've had. But certainly, I'm happy to feedback to the committee as that goes through. But also, it may well be part of our forward plan that we also invite the college to talk to us about the great work that they are doing as well within Sheffield.
Thank you.
Just briefly come back on that, because the essential point I'm making is, that provision is closing in the summer. So we can talk all we like about consultation and all the rest of it, it's closing. And that means that, as far as I understand it, any other provision will not be until at least September twenty four. And that's the particular annoyance I have about this. I don't dispute that people need to make decisions, but the way this has been done means that there is a gap. And we, I already know that there are students in that three hundred who are affected, who are going out of the Sheffield area now.
Well, actually, it might be better to bring Andrew in for the national picture, because he's more, more au fait with it. I don't know if, if Andrew, you'd come in and just talk about the ESFA's, some of their standing about the national picture. Sorry, doing that over the speaker. He's the expert.
I mean, in relation to the, the national picture and the broader picture in terms of post 16, it is very much driven by the national funding model, which is born out of the Education Skills Funding Agency, the ESFA. And the line of travel nationally has been away from individual sixth form provision, and in particular from dispersed, even dispersed post 16 college provision as well, which doesn't automatically, well, it doesn't make it attractive to post 16 providers, particularly schools. A couple of years ago, we had a school in the city where they'd opened a sixth form academy, I should, a big one where they'd opened an academy, and then weren't able to actually afford the provision, which then drew resources from the main part of the school and ultimately forced the, or caused the school to become inadequate. So I think there's a lot of caution around sixth form expansion, in particular school sixth forms. And in particular, there's a line of travel in terms of actually, actually concentrating particular curriculum focus in specific colleges, they're known as centres of excellence. But for example, it might be, rather than looking at Sheffield, actually, South Yorkshire is viewed, and actually different colleges within South Yorkshire then have different types of curriculum focus. So a young person in Sheffield might travel to Doncaster to do a particular type of curriculum focus, or to Rotherham to a different one. And likewise, young people from Rotherham and Barnsley would, Rotherham and Doncaster would travel to Sheffield to access whatever the college is doing. I mean, I'm, in the conversation that Meredith is referring to on Friday, I think we're all agreed that that is not something that we would want to see. And actually, the principal of the colleges have vowed that actually that they will oppose that if that, if that continues to be put forward or developed. But nevertheless, it's financially quite a precarious sector. It's very difficult for schools to operate in that space. I know, Joe, we're just going to add a few comments there as well.
Yeah, it was just to add a little bit around the context for Peaks, which is that although they have the capacity for three hundred, it isn't three hundred students that are accessing the site. And, you know, many of those young people choose to go into the city centre to access provision. You're right, some children, young people choose to, you know, cross over, cross the border. But actually, my understanding of the numbers is that actually, that's fairly well reciprocated, and there's a reasonable equilibrium between students coming in and students choosing to go out of the city. So, you know, in some ways, we, that's a benefit to the city. So I just wanted to add those, those parts in. And, you know, ultimately, the college have to make, as you acknowledge, a business decision about what's viable for them. However, things like our strategy that Sam and Cathy, thank you Cathy, have set out are the ways in which we can signal to the education market, if you like, not a, not a favourite phrase to use, but it is the way in which we signal clearly what we expect the demand to be and where. And, and also the principles and values we would apply in working in partnership with MATS and providers to, to meet need.
Thank you.
councillor Whitaker.
I did have a few questions, but they've been answered by the presentations, so tick them off. But all I would like to say is thank you for all the work you've done producing the document. And thank you for the briefings we've had in the presentation today, because it really puts it all into context. It's one thing just sitting on your laptop, reading all the information. And then when you have the briefings and we chat, and then when you have the presentation, it does make it much, much easier to understand. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. councillor Marouf.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to echo what councillor Whitaker said. I think thank you for the work that you've done. And the number of questions that we've been putting to you in briefing sessions as well. Because there is some work that goes on behind the scenes from the public here as well. But there's a thanking yourselves, I think we need to thank the teachers as well across the city. Especially my family, they won't thank me for it, because I've got two teachers in the family. So, yeah, they do a sterling amount of work. But the question I'm going to ask you about teaching is, a lot of these numbers that we're talking about today will obviously be interpreted by lots of schools, once this paper actually comes out. And how it will affect the actual schools, because people start reading into it, read between the lines. Were the unions actually consulted through this process? Because that will be the next stage of change that will happen. And we may see issues there. If you would just indulge me for a couple of minutes, Chair, I've got some questions and some observations. And I'll try to reduce them if I can. So that's one particular question. In terms of perception, whichever way you look at this, the public out there and the people who are listening, I mean, this is borne out by the consultation process that we've actually gone through, where 26 people actually actively, is it 20? Yeah, 27 people actively engaged with it, out of a population of half a million and rising, which is not a substantial number, to be fair. A lot of people still believe that the local authority has total control. I know we do over primary schools, but we don't over secondaries. I think if I'm correct, that's only one school that we have control over. So that perception still exists. And the perception that arises out of that is that there is, and I'm trying to choose my words here. But there seems to be inequality in terms of education across the city. Which is why, people who will be listening out there will probably resonate with me. Which is why people choose to send children or students, young people to schools that they believe will give them a better education. Because people listening to us now are not a number. They're a real family, real people, taking real decisions. They might well believe in what we're saying today for the future. But when the question is asked of them, for their child, for the next year, the answer may well be very different. And we may well still see this increase in numbers wanting to go to the planning area one. Where I think a lot of, as we get a lot of public inquiries and public questions, saying, how can I get my child into this certain school? So what are we doing about actually creating an equality of education? But teachers, to be fair, whatever school they're in, whether they're in the North, South East or West, teach a similar curriculum. Why is it that we have a difference in perception out there? That if you're in the South West of Sheffield, you're likely to get a better education? If you're in another part of the city? Something that we have to reduce, because also you've got to remember that these children are getting up at six o'clock in the morning to travel to a school in the South West of the city to get there for half past eight. Then they've been collected by their parents or they're travelling back home again. And that's a 12-hour journey for a lot of these children. And some from minority backgrounds then go on to mosque schools as well. So their day starts at six o'clock in the morning and finishes at nine o'clock at night. There seems to be something that we should be thinking about as well. Because we can't work 12 or 14 hours a day with travelling. And they can't work from home either. So there's an issue there and what we're actually doing about that. In terms of just sticking to the issue of parental choice. There have been instances where people from the public sector schools, this is, I'm talking about private schools, are migrating into state schools. In particular, in the South West. I've had a couple of cases when I was last on the council, where somebody was in the catchment and tried to get their children into that particular school. Because they felt that the education that was actually being provided was probably better than, the cross section of education, I'm talking about the whole picture. Was better than it was probably in the public school. So that is another issue that we've got to look at. And I'm sure it's in there, but it's numbers at the moment, where people need to see a narrative behind this. And if I'm correct in thinking, you've already picked up on the rising number of the population in Sheffield. Which I think statistically shows, Chair, that we will be going towards 600,000 in the very near future, in the next few years. So we're one of the rising cities. So that in itself will create a multiplier effect, I would imagine, in the school places that we need. So I'm sure that is actually being factored into it. And my final question or observation is around SEND and education healthcare plans, which I know Andrew and I have talked about on a number of occasions. The last time I was on the council, which was a year or so ago. The numbers of people that were actually being home schooled was almost equal to a medium-sized secondary school. Has that number increased? Or has it started to reduce? And an add-on question, which you need to ask as a result of that, is how many education healthcare plans have we got outstanding? And how many have we actually done in the last few years to reduce that number? Because a lot of people who are homeschooling, and this has been told to me, people that have said to me that the reason they're doing homeschooling is they're given a choice of, say, if they're living in the South West, they're given a school in the North. Or in the North, they're given a school in the South West. There is no way they're going to actually do that, because it's completely out of the natural environment of the young person. So the only option that they've got left is to sign on the dotted line and say, I'll homeschool. But that's not real homeschooling. It's a way of getting the statistic off the list. Thank you for indulging me, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, who would like to respond to that?
I'll try to pick on as many points as I can remember, and any that I don't pick up, councillor Marouf, I'm sure you'll just let me know. But just start with the end part, in particular in relation to elective home education. About 10 years ago, we had about 350 children who were electively home educated. And then that steadily rose over the next five years to reach about 500. It then held relatively steady at 500 until the advent of the lockdown and the pandemic. And in particular, anxieties around children attending the school during that time then drove a significant spike in the numbers for elective home education. And during its height in 2020, numbers rose to just below 750. They've since then declined and went back to the original about 500 level pre-pandemic. But during the last year, they've started to rise again. And they're currently about 600 children who are elected home educated. And you're right, with the analogy in terms of that cohort of children equating to a reasonably sized school. At the point at which a child becomes elected for home educated. Funding and resource to the local authority ceases to actually oversee them. And the responsibility for their education rests with their parents. But nevertheless, we have a team of people who work with parents. And in Sheffield, we have a local protocol which allows parents during the first 12 weeks of having made a decision to electively home educate their children, to actually return their child to their school. That's a local protocol that's negotiated with all our schools. We've also started to produce data for schools, which allows them to actually see in relation to the Sheffield average, whether or not more or less children on average are becoming electively home educated. Which then actually allows us to have a conversation, to understand the reasons and the rationale for that. I think it is partly driven by places and the geography that is part of that. And admissions colleagues in my service, and then colleagues who work in democratic legal service, who manage the admissions appeal process. Work hard to ensure that actually our decisions are lawful. But nevertheless, at the centre of all of those decisions are children and families. And in particular, where decisions are taken and perhaps opportunities are lost by some of those decisions that are taken. There are then some anomalies that arise in terms of how children's admissions are managed and how those places are allocated. And Meredith, as the director of joint services, has picked upon some of those issues. And we're going to have a good look at those in the next few weeks in particular. So there's a legal process, and then there is also just an element in terms of sufficiency. Joe will just remind me, but in terms of actually building the kind of flexibility and surplus that Sam was referring to. We are capped by that, by the DFE. So actually, whereas we would put forward projections and we would try to build in some flex and some capacity around that. The DFE nevertheless capped those numbers through the SCAP process that that's done, as I say. Which, off the top of my head, I can't remember what that means, but it's in terms of places planning anyway, school places planning. So whereas we would prefer to have greater flexibility and surplus in order to actually allow for movement of children and for either late decisions or for children coming into the city. We're prohibited from that, and we're actually restricted from that as part of that. To the point where actually, the funding that we receive for new places or for additional places called basic need funding. Where actually that is then limited according to the DFE's own model and formula. But nevertheless, as we work through this review in terms of the impact of individual admission decisions on individual children. We are probably going to pick up some learning from that, which we will relay back to the DFE as well as part of that. And I agree, I think, that in relation to special educational needs, which we, although we've made some progress, we still have a long way to go in relation to that. There's been a significant rise in the number of applications and the number of EHCPs that have been issued. In the 12-month period from January to December 2022, in the last calendar year. Applications and EHCPs went up by 12%. So they went from low 4,000 into upper four, the top end of 4,000 knocking on for 5,000. And many parents, if they were here, who are seeking an education healthcare plan for their children, would probably say that even then, there's still many more people who would like that for their children as well. There's a broader review of SEND that the government is starting, it's issued a green paper to that effect last year. It's not yet actually developed into any concrete proposals from them. But I think there is a recognition as part of that, that although the EHCP legislation and process was designed to actually make provision more equitable in the way in which children's needs were met. In truth, it tends to drive a process where to get some provision, to get some support, you need an EHCP. And that then drives more and more demand for that. We have colleagues in commissioning have done a really strong job with our special schools in the city. Our special school capacity is now about 50% higher than it was 10 years ago. But we've only actually added one new special school into the mix with that. So another, there's all the additional capacity has come about by colleagues in commissioning working with our special schools to actually increase the capacity that each special school can actually work with as part of that. But we still estimate that we are short of specialist provision, specialist provision in the form of special schools. Specialist provision in the form of what we would call integrated resource, but actual specialist provision within a mainstream school. And we also are short of regulated alternative provision, which is a type of school that is somewhere, I guess, between a mainstream school and a special school. But which enables children to pursue particular curriculum paths that actually neither type of school would actually provide. And apart from our pupil referral unit, and apart from our alternate provision for children who are unable to attend school for medical reasons. We have no formally registered alternative provision in the city. We've got two bids in with the DFE at the moment for two new schools. And the process of assessment is currently underway by then. I'll stop there just to see if there's any other points that you wanted me to cover, councillor.
Yeah, thank you for that. I think one thing that you have actually clarified quite well is the issue around SEND. And 4,000 and numbers rising is quite a significant population, really, isn't it? And I'm glad that we're raising it here, because if we know about that, and statistically we do now. Rather than just burying it in numbers, we can start to look at doing something about it. Because these are individual families. I've had quite a significant number of people who've contacted me around SEND. And in particular, not getting EHCPs done. They've gone privately to have them done. And which has cost them quite a lot of money. And they've not had that money, but they've used it, because they want their child to have a good education. But even then, we haven't got the provision to actually provide the service that we need. So it's something, Chair, that we really have to look at. I know it's central government. And I'm pleased that you also mentioned that we're not allowed to do any flex in the numbers because of the capping that we have from central government. Which, again, is a mitigating circumstance. Because people listening out there will think we can magic places in schools, because they want their child to go to that particular school. But we've got to have an honest conversation with them and say, look, that can't happen. Because a lot of the times, and I'm saying this for yourselves as well, is we get people putting in appeals. And they're only putting one school down. And that tends to be, let's be honest, in the planning area ones generally. That's where the highest numbers of appeals are. They don't put any other school down. And then what they do get is a school which is going to be many miles away from there. Which then causes a lot of problems for not only councillors, but officers. And the angst that the actual parents and the young person goes through. And that can sort of take them off the line of education. So people still expect us to do things when we can't. And that's what I'm trying to get to, Chair. Thank you. I think you've answered some of them, but there's too many here. We'll keep this ongoing dialogue.
Thank you, councillor Marouf. Councillor Marouf, I'm just mindful of time, and we've got two more questions, so then we'll move on.
Okay, quick. I just want to clarify, is it 23 that engaged, or was it 27? Because I heard the number 27, and it says 23 on the screen. Okay, thank you. So I just want to check, what did the council do to encourage more to respond to the survey?
So we put it on the council, well, it was used to be called, we've got a new platform, haven't we now? But it went on the council consultation platform, and we sent out a number of communications. We sent out some stuff through Learn Sheffield. We sent out some individual communications to all the schools and providers. So using all the networks, I've got to get information out, information out via the Parent Care Forum and various other networks like that. So we tried to kind of, you know, social media stuff, you know, the council social, whatever we call it, social media presence, we put some stuff out there. So we tried to kind of advertise it by a number of routes to direct people to have a look at it and make comment.
I'm sure you may disagree or agree here, but I think 23 is a pretty shocking number. So the question really is, do we really believe that we should be making decisions about the future of schools in this great city based on the response of 23 respondents?
Yes, I think I do, or I would be recommending that we do. I think we've had a good go at consulting. I think we're talking about some stuff that's quite high level. I think when it comes down to people's individual schools and decisions about their schools. Where there is a local consultation which will affect you individually, people are much more likely to respond. I think we're talking about a process which is big and strategic and involves lots of data. So I guess if I was a parent, I am a parent, if I was reading that to say, do I think they've got the methodology right? Maybe I might think, well, I don't know any better than anyone else, you know. And the principles, I guess, are probably fairly easy to agree with. So I think on that basis, and the fact that when there are individual decisions then made as a result of this, there is then a further consultation, you know, about extra play. If a school wants to expand, they have to consult with their parents, et cetera, and their school community. So I think overall, I'm saying yes. I think it's a low response. We had a number of people look at the information, but I think on the basis that we've done what we think is a reasonably effective consultation. I think we need to take it as that we're okay to proceed.
Thank you, Sam. That answered the question. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Just, sorry, just to feedback on that, I have been contacted by people regarding the draft consultation, actually, who'd like to have input. And I do know that Sam has offered to meet with individuals, because it is an ongoing dialogue. So I was quite comfortable with that feedback. So I've just got councillor Hussain and then councillor Habib.
Thank you very much. Following the questions, councillor Marouf and Ralph. 250 only participant for whole city. This is the city of 580,000 residents. So as we always say, every child matter. matter. So I don't think the citizens of Sheffield, they put the priority for the every child matter, because only 250 participants for the whole city. If you compare to any other issue of the city, they are more interested in those matters, except this education matter and the children who are our future, future of the city, who are going to build the city. Very disappointing. As a local authority, we don't have, I mean, control any other thing except the only admission policy. Is that right, isn't it? So for the allocation of the places in primary or secondary schools, that's the only local authority we have control, nothing else. What were you, I mean, the capital investment you're gonna do in schools, we don't have control. I mean, they don't contribute back to the community. Any community group, if they are using their premises, they have to pay, even though when they build, such as North East, when an academy been built, we close in, that's gonna be free use for the community, but it hasn't happened. So how can you make sure that happens in future when you invest? Regarding admission policy, why we can't give the free hand to parents, parental choice, if parent can afford to send a child to a better school, why they can't, why we are enforcing to the parents, no, you only can send a child in catchment area. Is that equality? I don't think, because every child should have a choice wherever they want to go or move a better school. I think every child got the desire, inspiration for other school to have better achievement. I met a young woman who told me her story. She wanted to do the sciences and she'd been told, no, you can't achieve that. You can't take those subjects in A levels. But what she achieved, she, when she did the PhD, she went back to those teachers, told them, look, here is a degree, and they were embarrassed of their turn to that child. So that sort of things, I think is not really good for the young people, stopping them, a barrier for them, because their colour is not the same, they are from a different postcode, they haven't got that postcode privilege. So I think this is not the right thing. So in that sense, I think parental choice should be on the admission.
Joe and then Meredith.
Thank you. There's quite a lot to respond to in what you've put to us. I think my first thought is that you're right, that low response rate is perhaps indicative of a lack of interest or a lack of buy-in from people. It may be because, as Sam rightly says, this is a high level strategy document. And when we get into the detail of individual schools, then that's when we're going to get more engagement. But I think you raise an important point about the role of the local authority, the role of the council in influencing the city's discussion. Certainly as officers, we are always really keen to hear your thoughts on how we do that and how we achieve that across all the communities in Sheffield. And then to speak to your point about postcodes and lottery, et cetera, I think that is the purpose of the catchment and the process, is that it prevents a system whereby people who can pay for a taxi or pay to drive their child across the city can access schools that local children might not be able to. It is to avoid that privileged premium, if you like, on school places. And for the post 16, it is dependent on projected grades and the grades that you achieve. And again, you know, that is why it's so important that we work with our children and young people to raise their aspirations, to help them understand what the opportunities and offers are and to support them to make, you know, their best choices for them about the way they move forward.
Thank you, Meredith.
Yeah, just to add to that. So I think I'm day 10, it's not day three anymore, it's day 10. But just going on that, this didn't go out to residents. It was a consultation that was focused on schools and on parents rather than the broadest resident population. Still saying that, absolutely understand that that level of engagement is something that we would want to increase. And also just around admissions policy, the point of admissions policy is to make it equal and to give that equality. Now, I think that there are issues which I'm seeing that are coming across my desk as I've been in post for 10 days about people being able to access the information about interpreters for parents who English isn't first language. And I think that that therefore can become a barrier to people to understand our processes and our systems. So again, going back to that meeting two weeks ago, I think that has to be built into our response to the Race Equality Commission to ensure that there is true equality as well as the equality which we aspire to on paper. So I hear that as well clearly.
Thank you. Councillor Hayby.
Thank you. I don't want to take too much time. There's two things to clarify. My honourable question about the unions, was that answered? That's the first one. Were they consulted?
So not separately. It was a consultation, but I think it's an entirely fair point, a really good suggestion. And we'll make sure that that's picked up in our, through our, through our normal channels. Because you're right, councillor Maru, that actually ultimately it impacts on the number of people employed, up and down, you know, in terms of the ebbs and flows of the population. So a really good point from members.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, that was a very good question. The second one was just to comment on a few answers about the 23 engaged in the survey. A lot of the answers is people are apathetic or there's a lot of apathy or, you know, they didn't think it was as important. As you said, Sam, they may have thought the methodology was right. But I think that thinking is a luxury to specific communities, whereas other communities that suffer accessibility issues, it isn't about the methodology, is it, will it affect me on a race base or, you know, a means based outcome? So there's a lot of things in here that's been played where the answer is blaming the people for not being interested, when really it's our job to show them why you should be interested and see how much, you know, well, I guess every councillor around this table, the casework we get in terms of education places, among the admissions, it shows that people do care about this. They would want to get involved. So I think there's something that went very wrong with the consultation, putting the consultation out to only get 23 responses when there's hundreds of caseworks specifically about this policy. So yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
Andrew.
I mean, just, I don't, if you've heard from us that we are pushing it back at people, I don't think it's that. And I totally accept that actually 23 is way too low, 250 having viewed it in itself is low. And we would definitely want to improve on that. And I think you're right, councillor Hayby, it's about making, it's about enabling people to see the connection between this high level strategic consultation and what happens in a couple of years' time when they're making an application or going through an admissions appeal or whatever, and making it, enabling people to actually see that that's where it's connected to. So I think it's an entirely fair point. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Just on the topic of the unions, myself and Andrew meet with the unions regularly. So we will bring that up on the agenda there as well. So we meet termly with the unions. Thank you. So on this item then, I think we've given it justice today. We've had a good conversation about it. And thank you to officers for bringing it and doing us the presentation. It is really helpful for everyone. So the recommendation today is that the committee note the content of the commissioning plan, September 23 to August 2026, of the early education and childcare, primary, secondary and post 16 sectors and associated action plans, and approve the publication of the commissioning plan for September 2023 to August 2026, early education and childcare, primary, secondary and post 16 sectors by September 2023, as appended to this report in appendix one. Are we all in agreement?
Yes, I think we've got no choice but to agree what we've heard from the officers. And thank you for that, because it is a high level strategy at this stage. But we will agree with this with reservations.
Oh, thank you. Councillor Ruff, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to second that, we agree with reservations.
Thank you. So now we're going to item number six, that was number five, thank you, which is the primary and secondary sufficiency plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So in some ways, the presentation covered a number of the, really the items in this paper as well. So I guess what we're asking at this point is for the permission of the committee to continue with the phase two expansion plans as set out in that second paper in a bit more detail. So what that focuses on really are the planning areas one and planning areas five, where we know, looking at the data, we need to make some interventions in the short term, ready for the next two or three years. So what the paper sets out is more of the data around, you know, what's driving the particular pressures in those areas. And the school, it mentions which schools are in each of those planning areas. So what we would do if we get the permission from the committee today to take those plans forward would be to go and have conversations with the different schools in those planning areas about what might be feasible in terms of temporary and or permanent expansions, you know, in the short term. I guess what I mean by that is having a conversation with the school based on their footprint in terms of the building, what we know about the space that they're using at the moment, in terms of how many pupils they've got. But as we explained in that first presentation, there has to be a collaborative conversation, because the schools, and only the schools know how they're using that space, you know, and what the life of that school really looks like in terms of how they move pupils around, between classrooms and between lunchtimes, all that kind of stuff. So what we're talking about is what ends up being a fairly lengthy negotiation process with a whole bunch of schools in a planning area. If we say we might need 60 more places in two years' time, it means talking to all those schools and providers and seeing what's feasible. They quite often come back and go, oh, we haven't got any space. And that's a reasonable starting point. But sometimes with a bit of looking at the floor plans and having and getting some of our education consultants to have a think about how they might use the space differently, you can reach a different solution and either get better use of the space that they've got, or if there is a temporary solution needed, whether it's a bit of building work or refurbishment of some space to make into a classroom, we can start that process now. It takes a little bit of time. So I think that's the reason we would like to get those conversations started before the end of the school year. So if we can get in there in the last couple of weeks before they break up, at least they start the thinking before we get into September. So I'll pause there, Chair.
Thank you. Any questions and comments on this paper? Councillor Maru?
Yeah, again, this has been a helicopter view of what's happening in the city. So we will support it, but we would like regular feedback, because it will become a micromanaged issue in different areas, which we will get members' questions on. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Ruff.
Thank you. Just going on page 15, I think it is, we've got a number of different approximates and the forecast, and it's fantastic. We've done so much great work on the forecast. Just want to ask, is there a danger that the forecast may already be outdated?
Yes, in the sense that any forecast, when you make it, is probably going to be wrong. It's just a question of the degree of error that's built in. I think because we've done the forecast, the closer you get to having made the forecast, it's more likely to be accurate. But all kinds of things can happen that you can't foresee.
Thank you. So in addition to that, just regards to forecasts, how often will it be reviewed and amended as necessary, if at all? Because do we want to get to a stage where we are saying we need four forms of entry for planning area five in 2425, when in reality we only need two?
So we do a full review of all the data at least once a year. So by the time you get into the winter, particularly once, because once you get past September, where the start of the school year, you know who's on roll. So that's the point when you've got a load of data about what's actually, what's the out term for the year. So by the time you get to the winter, the planning team are looking at the data to see, did this year turn out to look, how far off was it, were we, in terms of the accuracy? And that gives us the opportunity to then update for the next year. And I guess we have to set plans off at a kind of a particular pace. The flexibility that we're trying to build into the system means that we would try and build in as much flexibility as if actually you've got something drastically wrong and we set off building a, you know, a new classroom and we don't need it, as far as possible, we're able to try and amend that or get out of it, you know, to the point where we need to do that. So, yeah, we're trying to keep a really close eye on it. And just coming back to the point about letting members know what's going on, I think we would, we are committed to coming back and re-briefing members. So we would probably do some kind of briefing. It might not, I don't think we necessarily need to come back for a committee meeting, but doing a briefing, updating members when, once we've got past the start of the next school year to say, this is what it looked like, this is where we ended up. We'll give you some confidence that we're at least keeping on top of the numbers and letting you know what the situation is as it arises.
Thank you. I know on page 17, there's a big word that stood out for me, temporary expansions. What will these expansions look like? Will the children going to school in 2020, 2025 have to sit in cold, damp, green mobile classroom like I had to do in the early 2000s?
So temporary can mean a lot of different things. So some of it might mean temporary repurposing of a part of a building or, you know, that's used for something else at the moment. So quite a lot of schools, particularly the newer build schools, have got quite flexible provision in terms of space. So it might be a temporary refurbishment there. There might also be temporary mobile classroom facilities. We've got a couple of schools, well, a number of schools that have got those sort of facilities on site at the moment. I can also recall being taught in what was called a terrapin building back in my day, which was pretty horrible building. The temporary facilities that now schools tend to use are of much better quality and that obviously the building standards apply to them as well. So they are required to be much better standard than the stuff that I certainly would remember back in my day, that were temporary but were there for the whole of the time I was in school, if I remember that. So, yeah, and I think our planning and capital team are really hot on that and making sure that pupils are educated in provision that's adequate and suitable.
Just got a couple more questions about quality and climate. I know expansion at both Silverdale School and King Edward School are due for completion by September of this year. Both of these are in planning area one, which I believe to be a wealthy area. Will the schools in planning area four, which I believe to be not wealthy and have some of the most deprived neighbourhoods in the country, be afforded those same opportunities for expansion? I'm sure you would agree that children in planning area four also deserve to sit in new, modern classrooms similar to planning area one.
Yeah, so I guess there's a couple of issues that are related. So one is the quality of buildings generally. And there is, I guess, there's a separate dialogue and issue, isn't there, about the quality of school buildings overall and whether they can be improved or not. The capital colleagues that I've worked with an awful lot, you know, have a separate budget for the upkeep of school buildings. What we're talking about here is new provision and new places. And you've seen in the strategy that areas like planning area five, which is a much more deprived area than planning area one, we anticipate there being demand for places. So this strategy is driven by where we think there'll be more demand, rather than what the quality of existing school buildings look like. I mean, that's just unfortunate quirk of how the sort of planning rules and monies work, the separate monies, including existing buildings to building new stuff. In this one, we're just talking about the areas where we think there is going to be more children, then therefore demand for places.
I mean, one of the reasons why I specifically asked about planning area four is because in the documents that you have provided for us, you've specifically said surplus is required to allow for in-year movement. So if in-year movements are greater than what is currently forecast, then obviously those expansions will be required. I appreciate we can't always do permanent expansions, because it might be less in some years. But again, the question is there, will those schools in planning area four be afforded the same opportunities at those schools in planning area one?
So I guess overall, if I, when the data changes and our forecasts change and it looks like there might be additional demand needed in those other planning areas like Planning Area Four, then yes, we'd be talking to the schools in those areas about what they could do in terms of probably temporary expansions, depending on what the numbers are like.
Just a couple of questions about climate. So paragraph 4.4 talks about climate implications. There it says, "An overall climate assessment plan has been done for Sheffield schools." Has that plan been made available to members? And if not, why not?
I will make sure that it is circulated, it will be available. I will make sure that it's circulated and that we have it published as well, if it's not already published.
Thanks for that response, but the question was, why has it not already been made available to members?
So I need to check whether it's available through the website before I say it's not available to members. And I will circulate it so that everybody has a copy directly to you as well.
That's fine. Thanks, Jo. Further to the climate plan then, how does this plan take on board the need to meet net zero targets by 2030?
I guess it's a high-level strategy. So essentially by trying to get good local places local to pupils that need them, that's probably the prime ambition really, so that we don't have to have as few kids as possible moving long ways across the city in transport to get to school is our main ambition. And it's not always easy to achieve, but that's probably, so reducing car journeys, I guess, and transport.
Okay. In that, kind of answered my next question about how does the plan reduce distance children travel to school? For example, we have, when we're talking about casework today, we have lots of casework, especially in Nether Edge where children have applied to, go to Mercia, King Edward, Silverdale, High Stores, King Edward have not been allocated those places and have been sent across the city to Chapel Town and Ecclesfield and Chaucer. And obviously that would have a larger impact on climate than if they were afforded, given an allocation to more local schools. And just one final question, page 21. It's paragraph 6.1, it specifically talked about schools in Planning Area Five, which are rated by Ofsted as good, and that's the two schools you are looking at. Are there any primary schools that are rated as outstanding? And if there are, did you look at those schools for possible expansion opportunities?
I'm afraid off the top of my head, I don't know about the ratings of the different schools in that area. I'm not sure that anybody will. I'm looking at Andrew, see whether he can do now, Andrew.
I'd just answer around the homeschool transport. So homeschool transport and the transport that children go on is a key area which we are going to be looking at over the coming weeks and months and you'll be involved in that. There's also, I mean, we've already talked about some of the complexities, about parental preference, about where children are choosing to go. But there's also that conversation about active travel and how we link all of those things together. So if you can give us some time, I think we would like your involvement in what we are talking about and how we're going to look at that over the coming weeks and months, if that's okay. But I think there are issues at the moment.
That's fine. I'll leave that. Time being.
Andrew?
So sorry, in answer to your question, I'll have to do it by correspondence, but I'll circulate it to the full committee so we can just double check. In fact, we probably, for the committee, we could actually do just a note of all the schools, which planning areas they're in and which Ofsted grades they have. And you can see the pattern more clearly overall.
I mean, I have noted in the actual report, I think it is on page, yep, page 15, sorry, 16. The secondary schools are there and in what area, but the primary schools are not there. But thank you for answering my question. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Don?
Yeah, thank you. It just slightly won't cancel. Maruff has been talking about, it's about the access to the schools and I don't underestimate the challenges. And are we, I mean, especially with active travel, it's very easy to do it in some of the most affluent areas of the city and not so easy in the area that I represent in Southey. So, I mean, I think when we're looking at this, and I mean councillor Maruff mentioned questions to members about places, perhaps the correct place for those questions to come would be to the likes because so much of that has been devolved down, that we need to make sure that the like priorities are also taken into account the pressures we've got on school places and the travel and that we're not bouncing backwards and forwards. And, you know, officers are under a great amount of pressure to be in 20 places at the same time like we are. So perhaps we ought to kind of make sure that each of our likes is aware of the pressures in the areas and that when we are receiving things like with the active travel, that they are actually acting on that because we as a committee are asking them to do that rather than it just keep bouncing around. So that was just more of a comment really, because my questions were answered through that. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Horner?
Yes, I mean, I support this plan. In case anybody hadn't noticed, I am not going to let go of the bone of education provision in the South East and I will return to it. The one thing I would say, I remember a long time ago, and as a chair of governors back in Bradford, before the days of Ofsted, Her Majesty's inspectors, the head teacher was sat next to me boasting about our achievements. And the HMI said, "In my opinion, your children would pass a correspondence course." And what he meant by that was that we had a very, very good intake and they were doing really well. But we shouldn't be sitting there saying, "We're an excellent school." And what we all forget when we talk about schools that aren't apparently doing very well is are we looking at what the intake is? Are we looking at what the problems they face are? And how are we going to raise the standards? Because it is very easy to teach bright kids to pass exams. It's not so easy to teach those who, particularly bright kids with parental support behind them. And when we talk about the consultations, what about those parents? I don't want to say parents don't care, but I want to say those who are not as supportive perhaps of their children, those children whose home environments aren't conducive to learning. How do we achieve that? And that has to be our goal. It has to be raising the standards in schools that are deemed by some to be failing. I don't believe they necessarily are. I believe it is that they struggle with immense problems and we have to help them to do greater things because they start with great disadvantages. And so I will, as I say, support this, but I want to come back regularly to how we help everybody achieve. And that's not to denigrate those who don't appear to be achieving. So many teachers struggle with immense problems to achieve things with their pupils.
councillor Maruff and then we're going to draw a line, Andrew there. Thank you.
It's just an observation following on from what councillor Horner has said. I wasn't intending to speak again, but there is a strong point that councillor Horner has made and he's raised the issue of Bradford and also places like Birmingham, et cetera, where there are certain areas, whether we like it or not, a 90%, 95% BME occupancy. And the schools are equally like that. And there is not any great deal of cultural awareness of different communities. And if we just use an example of Sheffield, and no, we're not in that acute situation as Bradford and Birmingham and other places quite clearly are. The way they seem to find a way around it is actually having people going from one school to the other to learn each other's cultures. Otherwise, we're starting to polarise society in terms of wherever they are, however many school places we create, we can't create that cultural cohesion that we're all striving towards. And I think we may well be leading towards that, especially in certain areas that have been talked about today. So it may be something that we need to bring into our thinking at the high-level strategy level. Thank you for prompting me there, councillor Horner. Thank you, Chair. I won't say any more.
Thank you. I'll bring Jo in, but I think on that note, this is not just the job of educators to be able to do this piece of work. And our new, our system of governance through local area committees and the multi-agency way of working is what is going to underpin the work that you've just commented on. So the whole household approach to working with the family and not just with the child at school. So we need to ensure that within our communities, we have wraparound support for people within communities around employment, adult community learning, family support, youth work. It's the whole, the whole package that is going to ensure that all of our children across Sheffield are ready to learn and feel supported when they go in. So, you know, I give a big shout out to educators and teachers within schools. They have a very complex job to do, particularly coming out of the back of Covid and through the cost of living crisis. Families are under immense pressure at the moment and supporting their children is absolutely a priority, but sometimes not something that they are equipped to do at this current moment in time. I think there's definitely a will from all parents to support their children. But for this committee, we are the Education, Children and Families Committee and it is to ensure that all of the work we do crosses over, also crosses committees. So we've got Education and Skills Committee and we've got Communities, which we should be working with to ensure that all of our children do feel ready to learn and that our education team feels supported for them to do that. So Jo, did you want to just come in?
Yeah, it was just very quickly on that point about bringing head teachers and schools together. And actually, that is something that we know from some of our commissioning conversations with head teachers across the city. They are actually really keen to do is to have kind of support and challenge to one another in order to share experiences and to increase the sense of collective accountability for our children and young people. So I actually think that's, it's an idea that we've already had some interest from schools and academy trusts on. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So the recommendation for this report is to approve the overall strategy and implementation approach set out in this paper, including that secondary number on role forecasts are initially uplifted by 3% in order to meet demand at the highest allocation point. And to note that individual schemes will be brought through to the Finance Committee as part of the standard capital approvals process in the usual way. Are we all in agreement? I've noted that you are in agreement with some concerns. Any other comments? No? Thank you. We agree that. I'd just like to thank everyone today for attending. The date of our next meeting will be on the 27th of September at 2 o'clock. Just to let everyone know, work does not stop there. That's just the public bit. But we will be meeting, there will be stuff on the work programme, which we will be discussing throughout the summer. So hopefully I'll see you in some of those workshops. Thank you.